Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing for Tuesday, November 17, 2020. It's 5:00 p.m. And the topic of this public hearing is Revenue and Property Tax Changes. I'm John Hutchings, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah, and to my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. We also have County Manager Will Melchadz and Amy Davis, our Clerk of the Board in the room. And we have Assistant County Manager and Finance Director Robin Campbell and a host of very smart people on the Zoom with her. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider testimony on proposed revenue and property tax changes for 2021. This is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify can join by Zoom, phone, email comment, or mailed comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcement of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing is located there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Staff Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, will provide information on this topic. And then when we get to the testimony piece, you'll be called by name or given the opportunity to testify. And you will have three minutes with which to testify. You cannot donate your time to another person. When you're called on, please state your name and address for the record. Amy Davis, our Clerk of the Board, will keep track of the time, and if you can't see the clock, we will notify you when your time has expired. So the public hearing is now open. And Assistant County Manager, Finance Director, Robin Campbell, will now present a long, boring PowerPoint with background information on the proposal, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Robin?
You can share your screen for your PowerPoint.
Yes, yes, my long, boring PowerPoint. So, um, thank you, Commissioners, again, Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. And we are here this evening to talk about property tax revenue and other revenue that will support your budget. And I'm gonna share my screen. I'll try to pick the right one. And I've got move that. And when I'm presenting, I won't be able to see you. So if you have questions, please just stop me. But I am going to try to work through these fairly quickly. They are... There are an awful lot of them, about 43. It's important information, but it is all available. Should anyone want more details, we'd be able to provide that. So, um... Why will it not move for me? There we go. All right. So county budget process is governed by state law. We don't have a whole lot of wiggle room in the process. We can choose annual or biennium. You've chosen annual this year, but there are certain things that we have to do within set timeframes. The law requires that you hold a public hearing on the budget. That's coming up. It's going to be the very first Monday in December. That, too, is set by law. You, the County Board of Commissioners, have the responsibility to determine every line item in the budget and adopt a resolution by line item. And in Thurston County, we adopt budgets at the fund department level. The Board also has the responsibility of fixing levies and setting the amounts of fees and creating the revenue that will support the budget. State law requires a public hearing on the revenue sources. That's what we're doing here this evening. And it specifically requires that this public hearing contain information about property taxes. So a chunk of the time will be spent specifically on property tax. And then you are required to certify to the assessor the level of property taxes no later than November 30. So that is the framework that is underpinning the rest of our process as we move toward the end of the year. So here are the revenues that support your budget. An overall look at the budget, and these are the preliminary numbers. And they have continued to be refined. We're still working on refining these numbers. They may change slightly when you look at the final documents that are published on November 23rd. But at the moment, here's where it stands. In 2020, total revenues are a little over $407 million. Expenditures are set at $421 million. In 2021, those amounts go down. Revenue is anticipated to be about $363 million and expenditures $371 million. Now, these were preliminary agency request budgets, and the Board has made decisions on expenditures since the time that we put these slides together. So again, your budget that's published on November 23rd and that will be presented in the public hearings, the expenditures will be a little less. But overall, what you see is that the budget is going down in 2021. And the main reason for that is the grants that the county received to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've received about $40 million in funding to address the pandemic. And all of that, almost all of it, not all of it, but just about, is scheduled to end on December 30 of this year. So even though the pandemic costs will continue, the money that we have to spend on it won't. All right. So focusing on operating revenue at the total fund level. The taxes make up the vast majority of the budget. So we're anticipating about $138.9 million in taxes across all our funds. And we'll break this down a little more refined as we go. Charges for services are anticipated to be a little under $93 million. Intergovernmental revenues, about $41.5 million. Other financing sources, these are mainly transfers. But there are a few smaller things, but a lot of this is just transferring money from one fund to another. It's about $27 million. And then we have a lot of miscellaneous line items that come in at about $19.3 million next year. Here are some of the examples of the types of revenue we receive. Property tax and sales tax are our two major funding sources, but there are a number of special revenue taxes. Treatment sales tax is one of them, and for a special revenue, it must be restricted in a separate fund and spent in a very specific way. You don't have a lot of flexibility on how special revenues are spent. We charge for certain types of services, like when you bring a load of garbage to the work, you pay a fee to leave it there. Those are charges for services. We also have internal services that we charge for, such as financial services, the prosecuting attorney's civil division charges for their services, just a number of internal supports. We have intergovernmental revenue and state and federal grants. And you'd think that those are larger than they are, but looking closely, federal grants in a normal year, not in a pandemic year, make up about 15% of county revenue. So it's not a lot, but we do depend very heavily on those grants from the federal government and from the state. We also have revenue sharing from the state for things like liquor and marijuana. Licenses and permit fees, fines, forfeits, miscellaneous revenues such as investments, and again, transfers of money from one fund to another where that is legal. I'm gonna very quickly walk through some of our largest funds just to mention where the major tax or tax, the major revenue for each of these funds come from. Roads and transportation, the major revenue sources, taxes. These are gas tax, the county receives the share of in main part, and property tax is big for the roads. Intergovernmental revenues you see make up a large share of the road fund. Those are grants from state and federal agencies. In the solid waste fund, the vast majority of the revenue is charges for goods and services. Again, that is mainly tipping fees at the work. In the Medic One Fund, taxes, the number one revenue, we'll talk more about that because that is a property tax. Other financing sources for Medic One, again, you've got transfers between the Reserve Fund for Medic One and the Operating Fund that make up the majority of the other financing sources. And other sources of funding for Medic One are very, very minor. Conservation futures, also mainly a property tax, and the very small amount of other is timber revenue that is credited to this fund. Our Public Health Fund, I'm gonna just go backwards one. You see where most of this is blue because it's taxed, a dark blue. Well, Public Health, the vast majority is this lighter blue because most of their money comes from grants, federal and state grants. A very small portion comes from property taxes. Again, we'll talk a little more about that later in this presentation. But the vast majority of the money that funds our public health comes from grants. And we really are hoping very much next year, this is what we're currently anticipating, is a little over $11 million in state and federal funding. That's a little higher than usual, but not significantly. And we are going to need help from the federal government and the state for our public health to continue to support the county in response to the coronavirus. So that's going to be something that we watch as this year unfolds. The Housing and Community Renewal Fund, again, mainly intergovernmental revenues, and those are grants. The charges for goods and services here are, is the money that we receive in recording fees. But again, the vast majority comes from grants from the state, in large part Department of Commerce. And so we anticipate that we will have about $13.4 million next year to address the housing needs in the community. It's down significantly from this year. Again, we receive quite a bit of money to address response to the coronavirus for housing. That is a large part of why it drops. We may not have recorded all of the potential grants here. So again, another area that we'll be watching as we go forward, since homelessness is a major issue in our region. Here's the Storm and Surface Water Utility Fund. I think it's kind of funny that the revenue falls into the miscellaneous category because really what this is, is the operating fee that we all pay for the storm and surface water utilities. I believe that those are billed out as part of the property tax bill. It's not a property tax. It is a fee. But that's what is included in the miscellaneous revenue.
Robin, you can't, I don't know if you can see us. You said we could ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
As you're going along here, it seems like, you know, charges for goods and services. I mean, when it's, you know, it's not quite a million-dollar jump. And it's a million dollars the other way for miscellaneous revenue. Is that worth you commenting on? Are we gonna go over this at another time? Or we're gonna, you can just say, well, that's because of this. Like you've explained, COVID had a big impact on housing, for an example.
Right. If I know the answer, Commissioner, I'll say what it is in this particular one. I don't know why it shifts like that. That is something that we'll look into and get back to you on.
Okay, on both charges for goods and services and miscellaneous, it's quite an adjustment there.
Right. It looks like it flips a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll follow up on why that is.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's a great question. This fund is environmental health. It's a fairly new fund. This money had been accounted for within the larger Public Health Fund, but it really is restricted, and it is what we call an enterprise fund, meaning that this, the things that are paid for from this fund are services that we charge for. So licenses, when we go out and do inspections, we have the charges for the septic systems in this fund. So those are the types of things that are paid for in environmental health. You see, the largest piece is charges for goods and services. I believe that is the septic revenue. I'm gonna double-check on that and get back to you. The other ones, licenses are anticipated to go up a little next year. Intergovernmental revenues are anticipated to go up quite a bit. And that is because I think that we're planning to receive a grant in that area.
But that million-dollar difference in charges for goods and services, you're gonna explain that later, you say?
Yeah, we'll follow up on that and see why it is dropping so significantly.
Yeah, we'll probably bring the 10-year financial plan that we provided to the Board on this fund a couple of weeks ago. I might probably should have lied on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Here's the Treatment Sales Tax Fund. This is a sales tax. This is one of the areas that you'll see adjusted going forward when you consider the overall budget. We, at the time, we did the preliminary budget. We were still anticipating that sales tax would drop off. It has not, and we'll talk more about sales tax soon. But the 2021 revenue will be more than the $6.5 million you see here. And you see in this fund that total operating expenditures are significantly more than the revenue. The reason for that is, in this particular fund, there is a healthy fund balance. We are working at spending that down. So the Board is able to fund some programs in excess of the income because of the fund balance. Here's Detention Sales Tax. Same thing with the revenue. At the time we did the preliminary budget, we were anticipating sales tax would drop off. It hasn't. So in the budget that you see in early December, the revenue amounts in 2021 for sales tax areas is going to be more. We know we need to adjust those. The operating expenses, once again, we have a pretty healthy fund balance in detention sales tax. Not as healthy as in treatment sales tax. We have been spending detention sales tax. The legal uses of this fund are for the operation and maintenance of both adult and juvenile detention facilities. So we pay out operating costs for both the adult jail and the juvenile detention center. Here's land use and permitting. The biggest share of this is permit issuances and then charges for the services in this area. They're anticipating a slight increase in licenses and permits. If you compared this to 2019, you'd see that the 2020 revenue has dropped, and they're anticipating that it will start to come back in 2021. Charges for goods and services is pretty flat. Other financing is transfers between funds. The Board is moving to direct appropriation. And one of the areas where we've done that is instead of transferring money from the General Fund into this fund, instead, they will get a direct appropriation from the General Fund for compliance. That is why the other financing goes down. And then all other is a minimal amount. And you see the operating expenditures also go down. That is, again, in part because we are shifting from a transfer to a direct appropriation. So now we're gonna move to the General Fund. Yes, before I do?
Ask a question before you move to the next topic?
Yes.
Can you go back to Slide 5?
All the way back to Slide 5. Yes, I can.
What's the topic? What's that topic?
Can you explain for my and the public's benefit what, like, within a particular year, it looks like $60 million are spent more than revenue in 2021. It's $51.5 million. And that doesn't seem to, I mean, all the different funds you went through are all pretty matched up within a very small margin. So where does that gap, what explains that gap that you would see by looking at that superficially?
So I'm sorry, Commissioner Mensah, you're asking, why is the...
Why is total operating expenditure $421 million when total operating revenue is only $360 million in 2020? Why are we, it looks like...
Right, okay.
A massive gap.
So we had planned this year, and what we're showing here is the budget for 2020. And we had planned to make significant expenditures in capital projects. And so there would have been an operating transfer. I believe that it's this much more because we anticipated issuing bonds and then transferring that bond proceeds to the capital projects that we were going to do had a ballot measure for the courthouse passed. That was included in the expenditures for 2020. That's one of the reasons why it is significantly higher.
And then 2021?
In 2021, what you would see, I'd have to look at 2021. It, too, has some, not as significant, but there is some assumptions around bond issuing for capital projects. And again, it's those proceeds that come in, in an operating account, and then transferred to a capital account to be able to do the projects and pay for them. That is assumed in operating. Yes, Denise?
And in addition, 2021, the expenditures show what was requested, everything that was requested, and not everything is approved. So that was what we had at the time.
Okay, well, I guess I just point out that, I mean, we've gone through the budget a million sessions. So this is the first time I've seen this table. And, but the public might be seeing this for the first time, so it's sort of a confusing slide to the public. Because number one, it's been eight months since we had the plan to put, to, you know, pass a courthouse ballot and move forward on that project. Number two, there's some context in which operating is in opposition to capital. Now, obviously, in this context, I can see if you were paying bonds on, but even if you're shit, I don't know, I'm not a... I'm not an expert, but there are contexts when what operating means is, you know, the day-to-day operation of, you know, like when we talk about a park. We build the park, that's the capital construction. We operate, we need to operate and maintain the park. That's a different thing. So if you're saying total operating revenue and total operating expenditure, I don't think to some people, including me, it would be clear that that includes building projects that we're gonna do that come from our capital budget, which I could understand why that might vary. You might have saved a lot of money, and now you're gonna build these things, and you'd have that imbalance. But I got nervous when I saw operating revenue and operating expenditure, because that means something different to me.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that feedback, Commissioner. We'll make sure to make that more clear in the future. Because it's not, it's not like the payment of debt. It's that we will issue those bonds. It'll bring in a chunk of money. And then the transfer is what we are required to record in governmental accounting under the state auditor's rules. We record that transfer as an... We, we record that transfer as an operating expense. So it's, it is a, it is a function of governmental accounting that makes it show up this way.
It might be worth an asterisk and a footnote about that because, you know, people can see, people take things out of context. They're going to see this and think the board is spending $60 million more than it brings in revenue. And, and, you know, kind of run with that, not understanding that there's nuance to that that you've just described.
Great point. Very good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else before we jump into general fund?
Nope.
Nope. All right, so I am gonna get back to. Here we go, the general fund forecast. And this is a model that commissioners, you are familiar with. This is where we last left the forecast when you were making your preliminary decisions. And we anticipate the fund balance. If, if you look at the bars, that represents fund balance. The bright yellow bar is 2020, that's the year we're in. We anticipate an ending fund balance this year of about 22.8 million. The green solid line that becomes dotted after 2019, because after that point, it is still a projection, is revenue. And then the red dashed line that becomes little dots after 2019 is expenditures. And what you see is that, at this point in time, for 2020, we do expect that expenditures will be less than revenue. But the budget in future years is anticipated to flip that the other way. But the decisions that the board has made, these are expenses that are portrayed in fund balance. The decisions that you made have maintained ending fund balance in 2021. That's currently projected to be about $14 million. And in 2022, it is currently projected to be roughly $12 million, between 11 and 12 million. These are the expenditures that you will be considering in early December. And again, as, as Denise said, you know, these are the early preliminary numbers that's requested by county offices and departments. The breakdown here, as is common, law and justice makes up about 75% of the budget. It is, had the board funded everything that was requested, it would have gone up quite a bit, but still remained at roughly 75%. If you look at the budget this year, the law and justice percentage is significantly less. And that's because this year in 2020, a lot of the COVID response funding went into the legislative category. That's where non-departmental is. And we used that pot to pay out the COVID response. So that is significantly higher this year than usual. And you see that it drops next year back to a much more normal level at a little over seven and a half million. General government is your auditor, treasurer. The assessor is in general government. That's roughly $13 million a year. Again, this year, COVID-related grants came in that made general government a little higher than normal. Economic vitality includes portions of our community planning and economic development department, which is why it goes up next year. Code compliance is going to be direct appropriation from the general fund. Healthy Human Services and Internal Services round out the general fund categories. Here are some of the needs that your county offices and departments expressed in their budget requests. And the board, and we'll go over these in detail in the budget briefing for the public hearings, but these were the initial requests. Over 6.3 million, not including the cost of living adjustment, policy requests, including a lease and security for the new off-site courtroom in response to the pandemic. About $716,000. The sheriff's office requested five positions and corrections, which would be $557,000. The sheriff requested five patrol deputies, $511,000. When we go down this list, these are needs of the county, and there is no way that the board could have afforded fully funding all of these requests as they came to you. The district court requested substance abuse monitoring. The sheriff's office needs deputies for the off-site courtroom. Again, to continue to respond to COVID. There were equipment requests from the sheriff. Superior Court requested the reorganization of security. Commissioners considered funding climate mitigation. Some of these things got funded, but not all. And then a cost of living adjustment for our employees, most of whom are in bargaining agreement contracts. A 1.5% cost of living increase. And just the general fund share is about $879,000. So these are significant needs that were brought forward that the offices and departments had asked for. The revenue in the general fund, those are just some of the things that, that you need to cover with the revenue that comes in. And the expenses are more than the revenue was projected to be. The major portion of revenue in our general fund is from taxes. Property tax, and we're going to break the taxes down in a moment because it is such a large share. But property tax makes up 39% of the general fund revenue, and sales tax makes up 16%. Those two funding streams, the, just two, make up 55% of the revenue to the general fund. And when I do the projections from the general fund, I look at about 300 unique lines of revenue that come into the general fund. And when two of those lines are over half of the revenue, then you immediately recognize that most of the rest of it is way less and not as significant. And that is why we spend a lot of time when we do the forecast and projections. We spend a lot of time on property and sales tax. It is the most significant part of this fund and the revenue that supports the major spending in the county. Here's the breakdown of the taxes. Property tax next year is anticipated to be $44 million. A local sales tax, when you see the budget in two weeks, that'll be adjusted up. It'll be about $20.1 million. You are diverting property tax from the road fund, a diversion of 1.5 million. You also have a levy shift, and we'll talk a little more about that in a few minutes. Criminal justice funding is a, a sales tax that comes from the state of Washington. It's $3 million roughly a year. And then there are a variety of smaller taxes. A, a large portion of that 600,000 is a shared criminal justice tax that comes from the city of Lacey. But total taxes next year for the general fund are anticipated to be about $68 million. When we adjust the, the sales tax up, it'll be right around 68 million. And here is the trend in sales tax. These are nominal dollars. And as you see by this graph, they are going up. Wish I had a brighter pointer. Like, this, this graph goes back to 2006. We're going along. Even in the Great Recession, there was negative growth, but the revenue, the dollar amount coming in was pretty flat. And you see, starting in 2014, we started coming out of the recession more strongly. And our sales tax revenue has just been going up. And in fact, it was, I think, in August, we posted a record amount of revenue in sales tax, the most that the county had ever collected in a single month. And you'll remember that sales tax revenue is on a two-month lag. That means that the revenue that we received in August was actually spent by consumers in June. So that was, people were spending a lot of money in June, which was rather surprising because we were in the middle of a pandemic. And what we saw, and what is hard to explain, is that this is an adjusted year-over-year. And what that means basically is, if you look at this, June of this year compared to June of last year was minus almost 15% of, of change. So if we compare the two numbers year-over-year, that creates this. And this is a better gauge of the economy than the nominal numbers. Because you see, they're just keep going up. But overall, you know, really, what is the year-over-year change? This represents growth. We'd been on a pretty steady growth. This only goes back five years, but the county was experiencing fairly robust growth until we hit the pandemic. And we had really expected, I had expected, based on forecasts and, and economic headlines from around the nation and, and our state, that the revenue starting in about May would have dropped off. And here, you know, May went down like we thought it would, and June went down even more. So this was following expectations, but then it popped back up. And that was surprising. And it did that in a number of counties. And you may recall, early on in the pandemic, that we were talking about, what is the shape of this recession? Is it going to be a U shape like the Great Recession was, where it drops down, stays flat for a while, comes back up? Is it gonna be? There were a lot of shapes being tossed around, but the classic economic downturn shape is a V. And that's exactly what it looked like this was shaping up to be. It dropped down and then it popped back up. And the big question is, is it going to continue? And had the COVID numbers stayed relatively steady, we had anticipated that this V-shaped downturn, where we just popped right back out of it, very well could have continued. But now that the governor has once again closed many of the businesses in Thurston County, it is once again a big question about where will sales tax go from here? What we had projected in the forecast is that this is year-over-year change. And this goes back to 1992. You see the recession, I think this was oil. Here's the dot-com bust. Here's the Great Recession, when the banking and housing markets collapsed. Here we're coming back. In 2019, it had already started to soften. The growth was not as robust. It was still a strong growth, a little under 10%, still pretty darn good. We had anticipated that the growth would continue to fall off. At this point, we think it's going to be just over 5%. Our revenue is tracking very close to our pre-COVID forecast. And normally, when I do a forecast, I align future years with the Washington State Economic and Revenue Forecast Council. Because I have never claimed to be an economist, and they are excellent at what they do. However, what the Forecast Council has projected, they think that growth in 2020, they are projecting 1.7% growth. They are, this is their September forecast, by the way. In 2021, it is a negative 1%, then popping up to 6% in 2022, and leveling off at 5% in 2023. I did not follow the Forecast Council's forecast for Thurston County sales tax revenue forecast for next year or the next few years. And here's why. This is a graph from the Washington State Department of Commerce website. They are publishing an economic recovery dashboard. You can look at what did the last three months look like by county? That's this map. And what it shows is here's Thurston County at this 2%. Taxable retail sales over the last three months in Thurston County have actually gone up by 2%. Many of the businesses along the I-5 corridor, the counties along the corridor, most of those are going down. Some of them significantly down. And King County has dropped by 15%. That's a decrease. And that is in large part going to drive the statewide forecast. So didn't want to align with a, a pretty pessimistic forecast when it was being largely driven by large counties that are not doing as well in the current economy as our county is. And if you look only at retail trade, retail trade around the state is actually doing fairly well in the last three months. We're at 15% growth in retail trade. If you look at construction, you see it's dropping off somewhat. But retail trade is like over 30% of our sales tax revenue, and it is going strong. And that is why sales tax, I'm projecting this year is going to come in at a little over 5% above forecast. And I think that even with the downturn, will continue in county government to have, while it won't be strong growth in sales tax, I think that we'll see better growth in other areas in the. I think that we'll see better growth in other areas in the county. Moving on to the property tax. This is just a distribution of where does your property tax dollar go? Just over 9% goes to the general fund. And that, again, the property tax in the general fund is 39% of our collections. So this has to, in large part, support so many of the services, especially in law and justice, that citizens receive. And yet, less than 10% of your property tax payment goes to support those things. A small amount, about 2.5 cents, goes to Medic 1, 4.3 cents goes to the roads, pennies, one-third of a penny goes to conservation futures. But the bulk of your tax dollars goes to the state and in support of local schools and to other local districts. The county gets a very small share. So the property tax levy, the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to raise the property tax levy by 1% without a vote of the people. If you wanted to raise it more than that, you would have to put a levy lift on the ballot. The other cap by state law is the IPD, which is the implicit price deflator. So really, what the law says is the commissioners can raise the tax up to 1% or the IPD, whichever is less. The IPD is just calculation of inflation. Most people are familiar with the CPI or Consumer Price Index. The state instead uses the IPD. This year, the IPD is less than 1%. It is 0.602%. So the board is limited to this 0.6 unless the law also allows for the board to adopt a resolution of substantial need. So what is substantial need? It's not clearly defined by law. We have guidance from the MRSC, that's the Municipal Resource Services, Municipal Research Services Council. They recommend that local jurisdictions establish substantial need based on what the county needs to spend to maintain our general operation of the county plus a fiscally responsible fund balance. And as you've seen, our offices and departments have presented budgets that show significant need in excess of funds that are available, even if you implement the full 1% of the tax lift. So this budget presents a 1% levy lift, and we are asking the board to consider adopting a resolution of substantial need and increasing the levy by 1%. Here's the calculation. It's very complicated. I'd be happy to go through this. But basically, what you see is 1% of a levy increase is about $411,000. And if you think back to a prior slide, the COLA, the 1.5% COLA for your employees is about $879,000. This 1% levy increase doesn't cover half of one action that you will take in the budget that increases costs in the general fund. So it is a minimal amount. The other things that raise the levy up are new construction, assessed value of state utility properties, and refunds. And all of this combined computes the new levy rate. You get to the new levy rate by dividing the levy by the total assessed value in the county. So our new levy rate will be $1.11. This year's levy rate was $1.16, so the rate is going down. Here's the resolution. The resolution doesn't have these numbers. It's very confusing. One of your property tax resolutions by law has to have a dollar amount and a percentage. The percentage is not 1%. It's not IPD. It's calculated this way, and that's technical. If you'd like to get into it, or if anyone would be interested, I run a short class on how to do the levy. But just know that the resolutions that I bring you are going to have different amounts than what you might see. Here's the impact. The total property value in Thurston County is going up. So you see this upward trend. The tax rate, because values are going up, and you are limited on how much you can raise the tax, the rate is going down. And although the total amount of the levy is more, taxpayers on a rate per thousand are paying less. So here is what the increase looks like. Now, I got these average home values off of Redfin online. Anyone can look them up. It's the amount in October of each of the prior years. So according to Redfin, this is the amount that the average home was selling for in Thurston County. And you see that the general fund tax at this rate, our 2017 rate was $1.01 and a little over 26 cents per thousand. The 2018 levy would have increased because the value of the home went up significantly, and a taxpayer would have been paying about $40 more for the general fund. This is again, that 9% of your tax dollar that comes to the general fund. In 2019, it would have gone up by about $26 a year. In 2020, $38 a year. And in 2021, if you do the full 1%, the increase will be just under $13 for the homeowner of an average-priced home. So here are assumptions in the general fund. The total levy increase was about $1.1 million. Part of the reason that it was not higher than that is you are reducing the road levy shift from $3 million to $2,750,000. You're starting to pull back on the levy shift. Sales tax is currently tracking to a pre-COVID forecast. We don't know if that will continue, but we're estimating that it will at roughly 5% per year. There is a significant decrease in the revenue, mainly because the COVID grants are going away. All of the revenue increase in the general fund was in large part from taxes. No significant increase was noted in any officer department in the general fund other than property and sales tax. Everything else was minor and made me tied to grants. And expenditures in the general fund decreased again, mainly due to COVID grants that we will no longer have available, even though the costs of COVID are going to continue. Here's your general fund table, mainly taxes. Here's the road fund. Mostly taxes. Property tax is the main source. Your Medic 1 fund, taxes and transfers. Conservation futures again, taxes, and a very small amount from timber. Behavioral health and veterans funds. A small portion of the general fund levy is diverted to public health, a little over $1 million next year for male health and developmental disability programs. And then the levy for the Veterans Fund is really a portion that would have gone into the general fund next year, anticipated to be $458,000. So here's the very small portion of taxes in public health. But remember, most of their revenue is grants. And these are the actions that we are asking you to consider taking next week. Adopt a resolution of substantial need, increase the property tax by 1%, and certify the taxes to the county assessor. That is my very long presentation.
Told you. And as tongue-in-cheek, I was asked to say that, that this would be long and boring PowerPoint, because I wouldn't have made that judgment. Now, we'll see if anybody would like to testify. And we have, you want to testify? Sure. Robin, have you received any written comments or emails?
We have not, budget staff have not received any written comments on this budget. I would mention that the comment period will be open one more week.
Thank you. All right. So again, if you're on the phone or on Zoom, we'll get to you, and you'll be given three minutes. We'll keep track of that time. In the board room, we have John Pettit. Come on up, please.
Commissioners, my name is John Pettit. I live in East Olympia, out here in a little bit of south of Olympia. I'm a little frustrated, I'll have to admit, right from the beginning. Because I want, we're here, what I have is, come after noon, I finally received the three different statements or resolutions that were being proposed. They were never available to the public, ever. So now that we have them. When I walked into this room today, I asked a simple question of the county manager. Have we got a preliminary budget yet? The answer is no. Okay. We don't have a preliminary budget, but every possible thing to excel property taxes up is being presented for your consideration. The numbers that you saw on these multitude of charts on here, they were all caveat that, well, they're going to change. So you don't have the real numbers. You don't have any opportunity to actually have a real preliminary budget to consider yet. The only thing you do have is you have staff telling you, hey, let's raise the taxes as much as we can. Now, I'm going to note to you a couple little things. In October of last year, when you approved the budget for this year, initially, you had approved it based upon an end fund balance of approximately, well, a little less than $6 million. Less than $6 million. Then came along a surprise. Oh! Well, it ended up actually being, correction, I'm going to correct that. The end fund balance was estimated, the starting fund balance was estimated at $10.3 million with an end fund balance estimated at less than $6 million. Well, gee whiz, we found another $10 million that we hadn't really anticipated. And so then we ended up having a ending fund balance to start with at $20,524,000. Then you were motivated to take actions to take money away from the departments and elected officials, in which now you're currently estimated to have an end fund balance for this year at $23 million. You're going to have to help me understand what substantial need is. These are all taxpayer dollars. They're not some corporation's opportunity just to build up a fund balance. Every time you tax, it's taxpayer dollars. They don't belong to you guys. And all you're going to do is to provide services. As I mentioned, I'm very frustrated. I have three different resolutions, and I'm given three minutes to cover the most complex issue. This should have been three different hearings related, one to each one of these issues. So I'm opposed to what you have going on right now. And I really think you need a brand-new set of hearings, and hearings after you get your preliminary budget actually established, which by state law typically happens the first week of October.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be looking forward to a completed preliminary budget.
Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No.
No? Okay.
Let me check there.
Sure.
For those members of the public who have joined us via conference call this evening, if you'd like to provide public testimony related to the proposed revenues relating to the property tax in association with the 2021 budget, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes.
No, sir.
Okay, so public comment is now closed. And questions of Robyn or staff?
No.
Questions of Robyn and staff? I just have one, Robin. Yes, beside, it was, you explained the IPD is 0.06%. And if the board wanted to do a substantial need, it could go to 1%. How many times in the recent years since the establishment of that rule, that legislation, living to 1%, how often has the county done that?
The, to my knowledge, the county has done the full 1% every year since the initiative that established the 1% limit.
Was that in the 90s or 2000s?
I want to say that that was in the late 90s, like 98 or 99.
Okay, thank you. And what, what is the, what's the cost of business to maintain, as you said in the PowerPoint, maintain our services to the county, to our citizens? What's the cost of that? How is that going up percentage-wise? Do you know?
Don't have that offhand. I can, let me see if I can bring something up that would have that.
Is it more than 1%, though? Like, is it around 3%?
Yes. The cost of doing business, so if I look back at the last few years, a general fund, 5%, 9%, 5%, it's not uncommon because there's the COLAs. Medical inflation drives it up in large amounts. And then there's just the, the general needs of providing services to a growing population.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Anything from Robyn?
Commissioners, you heard, the board must take an action on the revenue by November 30th. November 30th lands in a weekend, so the next board meeting is on the 24th. We'll propose resolutions for you to consider taking an action in the afternoon, next Tuesday. However, in the morning, we'll have a conversation, and we will answer the questions the board had relating to some of the specific areas requested today.
Okay.
So that is the, that is the plan.
And again, Commissioner, my seatmates, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, is Robyn supposed to close?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's been about one second. It's been moved, second to close the public hearing, any further comment or discussion? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.